Good evening, everyone. I've got a packed house tonight. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Penfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, also online at PenfieldTV.org and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via Town of Penfield Television. Following tonight's proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and also on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Just search for Penfield TV in your device's app store, and it is free. If you wish to address the board this evening regarding any public hearing matter, there's going to be an opportunity for that public participation, and that will be following the applicant's presentation to the board and any questions that the board may have of the applicant. There are various ways to do it for those watching this meeting live. Those folks, if they have a question or comment, can call this number and phone in their comment. You can also send electronic comments on the Penfield.org website. And of course, if you're here in person and you want to comment, you can just come up and speak in the microphone as well. We like to point out every month that we think the town does a really good job of making sure that citizens are aware of what's on our agenda, what's going to happen tonight, so that they know that they can come in and speak their mind if they like, or they can send in comments before the meeting. Sometimes people call or send emails. They can also use the methods that we've talked about, call in and/or send in comments via the website. How does the town do this? Well, it does it in many ways. One way is it sends postcards to people that live within a certain number of feet of the property that's under review. I think we probably all receive such postcards. The town also posts the agenda on the website and here at the town hall. And then the, maybe the most visible aspect of it is the town makes the applicant literally post the sign on the property. We drive by and we see, hey, this property's under review. If you have any questions about it, call this number. So again, the town does that, so people are more fully informed of their right to come in and speak about the application, and we think it works well. So tonight's meeting will take place in two parts, although we're not going to take a break, so it may just seem like one. The first part is going to be our work session. We'll take care of approving the minutes or voting on approval of the minutes from the last meeting, take care of any tabled items that we may have, and we do have a couple tonight. And then when that's done, then we will get to the public hearings. As I said earlier, I think we'll call the applicant up to these tables. We'll ask the applicant to give us, any witnesses to give a name and address just for the record. And then we'll likely have the applicant who's filled out a very, most people's applications are very thorough and detailed, so we don't need to rehash them all. But the board members will generally lead the applicant through the process, so we can highlight the areas of concern and then get to any comments or question that we may have. And again, we do think it works well. That being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. So the first agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the March meeting.
Make a motion to approve as written?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve as written and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we have two tabled applications, one for Chick-fil-A and another for a private residence for, I think it's a...
Accessory structure.
Yeah, accessory structure with several variances. And my understanding is both applicants have asked that this board continue to table those matters.
Yes.
Is that correct? All right, so I'll just make a motion on Chick-fil-A, that that matter be, can, continue to be tabled at the request of applicant.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll, if you guys don't mind me hogging the microphone, also make an app, a motion to table the Renwick Run application at the request of the applicant.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. That's the end of the work session, and we'll get right into tonight's public hearings. May we have the first application, please?
Sure. Jared Hopkins, 26 Mount Eagle Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building with less setbacks than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 and Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 26 Mount Eagle Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Jared Hopkins and Marissa Johnson and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 109.01-2-305. This is application 25Z-0007.
Okay, thanks. May we have your name and address, please?
Yes, Jared Hopkins, 26 Mount Eagle Drive, Penfield, New York.
Okay.
All right, Jared, my name's George, so I'll walk you quickly through the process. I did have a chance to read the provided information, very thorough, thank you for that, by the way. So you're looking to put a 12-by-16 or 192 square foot shed in the back, wait, hand corner of your property?
Correct.
Facing, yeah.
Southeast corner.
Southeast corner. And you're looking for two variances, both to the west?
It would be to our east.
East and to the, to the north, right?
Correct.
And those are variance of seven feet from the normal 10-foot, so that is a, and that's on both sides.
Correct.
I did see that you have talked to your neighbors, and they have expressed no concerns with that. As a matter of fact, one neighbor is fine with it because they have arborvitae planted, so they don't have to see it. It is, obviously, is 70% of a variance, so it's on the larger side. Could you walk us through a little bit about the rationale why you couldn't move them in a couple of feet and perhaps lower the amount necessary for the variance?
Sure. So yes, one factor is the arborvitae, so really trying to get it out of our own sightline as well as we're looking at the rear of our house. But when you are in the rear of our home, our backyard, in the summer months, that back corner, because it has very little sunlight exposure and is blocked by a pretty large tree for irrigation as well, it really just sits bare and its tree roots throughout the entire summer months, so it's pretty unsightful. We try to really pride ourselves on the care for our home, and it's an area that's sore to us. And in an effort to get everything that's out of one bay of our garage, all the landscaping materials, my wife loves to garden, all that to just be housed in the rear of our property. So setting it as far back as we can to the three-feet limit, again, kind of keeps it out of where irrigation heads are currently, that are, been installed since the home was built back in 2001. So that was the reasoning for the location.
Yeah, irrigation systems, I know, those are not, those are not inexpensive when it comes to moving or reworking.
Right.
So it makes sense. Can you tell me a little bit about the structure itself? Will it match the home and the colors there?
Yeah, our goal is to get it to match as closely as possible to, so the front-facing side of our home is mostly brick, but we do have some vinyl siding around the side of the house that we're going to match. Same thing with the asphalt shingle color, as close as we can possibly match. Obviously, the home's, you know, been there for 20-plus years now, but our best possible, to make it look like it's always been a piece of the home.
Got it, match. And as well, will you be running either power or water or anything else?
No.
So no external, okay.
No utilities.
Gotcha. I don't have any additional questions.
Andres?
No.
So the, the neighbor to the east, I think it is, yeah, right there, thanks. Has that neighbor, and if there hasn't, and I missed it, I'm sorry, but has that neighbor commented on the application?
I, well, I don't know if you've received any formal applicants or any formal questions. Yeah, our neighbor to that side specifically, you see the location of their pool, the tree that we need to remove in the back of the house in order to make this whole shed fit, blocks the evening sun, so they've actually volunteered to pay for the tree to be removed.
Oh, wow, okay, okay.
We're not going to take them up on that, but just to be good neighbors, we feel that we've really acclimated well to the neighborhood, so it kind of serves two purposes.
I mean, we could make it a condition of the application, the neighbor pays to take the tree down. No, it's okay.
Yeah, we could. Yeah, I mean, the reason I was going to ask about that is because it seems to me they would be the most affected by this, but obviously, they're supportive of it based upon what you just said. And the property to the south with all the trees, is that town property?
That belongs to...
Belongs to the Nature Conservancy, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, the Nature Conservancy.
Okay, all right, so it's going to stay the way it is, most likely. Okay.
As long as you'll keep it that way.
You did beat me to the last question.
I thought you said you had no more questions.
It came to me afterwards.
Okay, well, all right.
You jogged my memory loose, though.
Very good. All right, I don't have any more questions. I don't see any electronic comments or nobody online on the phone, so I'll ask anyone in the audience care to speak about this. Oh, okay. Then we will move to the consideration of the application, starting with the environmental.
Yeah, so for secret, this would be a type 2, requiring no further action?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So on the merits, I would, although it is excessive at 70%, they, based on the location of the property, the irrigation system, and the fact the neighbor to the east is okay with the placement, I would move to approve that based on those. I would also recommend that the tree removal be discussed.
Right.
Finalized, so that you and your neighbor are on the same page with that.
Right.
Yeah. I won't make it a condition, but I would definitely make it a recommendation that you, you finalize that conversation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. The only other thing I wanted to add is the size of the shed is not the subject of a variance request. So I think, George, you earlier said large, you were referring to the percentage of the variance request.
Correct.
So I just wanted to clarify that, which, an opinion with which I agree, by the way. But, okay, so we have a motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Great, thank you. Anything else required of me at this point? Am I...
Building permit or anything like that? Not tonight.
We got to do the permit, we'll get that ready for you and call you when it's ready.
Okay, that's right, I remember Andy describing that. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next application, please.
Hassan Palat, 130 Watson Road, Fairport, New York, 14450. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 130 Watson Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Hassan and Gizem Palat and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 140.01-7-13.1. This is application 25Z-0008.
Can we just get your name and address for the record?
Hassan Palat, 130 Watson Road, Fairport, New York.
Thank you. So tonight, you're here for a 24-by-30 shed or accessory structure. Currently, the code allows you a maximum of 300 square feet, and this is coming in, I think, right around 720 square feet. So you're looking for a variance for that difference in size. And then you're also, because you're over 300 square feet, you require a 50-foot variance from all sides of your property?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's a 10-foot from the right side, and then I'm okay up from the back.
Correct, correct, but you need, to be within code, you would have to be 50-foot, which is basically centered right in the parcel.
Understood, yes.
So that's why, you know, if it was, you know, if it was under 300 or 300 and under, you wouldn't actually need that, you could be at 10-foot.
Yep.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about the size. Your application's commented about some of the things, but I guess, you know, quantities, you know, that's a fairly large structure for the size of lot you have, that where you're trying to place it. And so I guess a little bit of the justification on why that large, why not something smaller? Because it's pretty much the size of your garage right now.
Correct. So we, we're actually just got done building, and prior to me coming into the town, I was under the assumption I can just come in and get a permit. If I would have known, I would have probably just made, I built a four-car garage.
Yep.
I just found out too late.
Okay.
And I understand that's nobody else's fault but mine, but, so essentially, it's a two-for-one, it's going to be extension to my garage and my shed and stuff for the pool.
Is, logistically, does it, could you still expand your garage if you wanted to?
We, we did talk about that. We have a room, it would need to be redesigned. We do have a room behind the garage now.
It would be like a 93 garage or something, yeah.
Correct, so we can't do a 90 off of it, but that was the first thing discussed.
Okay, all right. Because that would then all of a sudden, then you can stay within your setbacks, you know, with your garage, because you're just expanding your current home.
Correct.
That's what I was asking. And aesthetically, it looks like, originally, you would sense it looked like it was going to be one color, or maybe that was just a rendering, and now, I think it's a more recent picture.
This is variation four, yeah, so we, essentially, it's identical to the house, other than it physically touching the house.
Sure.
It'll look like the house, I even have the stone to match for the front.
For the, for the edge there, or the lower section there?
Yep.
Okay, okay. And then, I don't know if you're aware of the letters received from, I think, two adjacent properties within eyesight of this location. Have you received both of those?
Yes, yep, I've read both.
Couple of the comments, I guess I'll have you address those. I guess, you already talked about what the, what the structure will look like. No loft up there, no second floor?
No loft, no.
Approximately how tall?
It's going to be, it was 20, that's another thing, I brought down to 17.
Okay, oh, so it's going to be 17, so I'll have a flatter roof now, or?
Yes.
Or garages, okay. And then, one person asked, looks like there's going to be a garage door in the back as well?
Yep.
Is that for driving vehicles through?
No, that'll be for the lawnmower.
Okay.
Essentially. The front will be for the cars and the trailer.
Yep.
And the back will be for the lawn equipment.
And then, based on the placement, it looks like the placement will actually sit basically next to your house. It won't go below your house, if you're, you know, if I was looking at the, I want to say south, but I don't know if it's actually south. There we go, yeah. It's going to be placed up almost next to the driveway there?
Correct.
Right at the edge, okay.
Yep.
And, let's see. One of the other comments was in terms of the size of it, how could it be mitigated so it wasn't as visually, I guess, I'll say obtrusive, but you know, how did, you know, how could we block some of that, you know, whether, I think you had talked about landscaping, what kind of landscaping were you proposing for that?
Correct. I currently have 32 trees ordered for the back, so that whole back will be covered. And then for the side, we haven't even got done with the side, but we're also going to cover up the sides.
Okay, so in a sense, you'd have foliage or trees, whether arborvitae or something like that?
Yeah, and we are, we're paying significantly more to get taller trees, so it's essentially privacy faster.
Sure, sure. Have you talked with any of your neighbors yet? I know you're probably new to the neighborhood, so you may not have...
Yeah, I haven't even, I haven't really even met anybody, except the house right on top of me there.
Okay.
And that corner house, he didn't have any problem with it.
Okay.
Other than that, I haven't even met anybody yet.
Sure, sure. One suggestion I would have, it is large, and I'd hate to see this come out with, you know, neighborhood battles coming out after this kind of thing, but you know, what you said tonight in terms of the trees and the, you know, blocking it a lot more, I think that would address many of these letters that we had here in terms of that type. And I don't know if it would make sense to table it tonight, to, you know, confirm with the neighbors that, okay, this is, this is my plan in terms of planting foliage. Does that, you know, does that work? Does it stay within character of the neighborhood? Because that's one of the five factors that we look at, you know, is it within character? Oftentimes, when neighbors start saying, okay, there's a large building, is this going to still stay within the character, because we're kind of changing that, because not a lot of people have one that large? And then where's it go from that? So you know, there's those fine lines where, you know, this might be too big for the, for the parcel, especially with, you know, your neighborhood saying there's, there's issues already. That's why I'm, you know, I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but it might make sense, if you're okay with it, you know, to actually, you know, reach out and talk with them and talk about what the, you know, proposed plan is for the, for the landscape, because I think that could have a pretty good impact in terms of how people view it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, I second that.
And we've gone as far as changing the siding on it, so am I to the house?
Yeah, yeah.
We've done the stonework and the roof pitch, I mean...
It looked like it was made to be built attached to the house.
Correct, minus physically being touched.
And could it go, could you go any closer, or you know, like, right now, you're at 10-foot, could you push it any farther?
I wouldn't be able to get in the back, especially because we have, we're going to be doing a pool.
Ah, okay.
So then I can't get any equipment back there to put the pool in.
Got it, got it, okay. Those are the questions and comments I think I had. I think I, I think the only other comments that I saw in here...
They said something about the noise as well.
The noise, in terms of, I think, you know, the, you know, just the size of it, you know, I think oftentimes, you know, what, what your use is, is storage, it's not going to be to work on vehicles, it's not going to be to work on equipment, things like that.
No, I mean, I got, yeah, I got three kids, I don't got time for cars anymore. I buy them done.
And then, and I think those, I think the other comments were in terms of just, it's really the size is really the main point, in terms of how it fits, and then, you know, on that lot. I think your lot's fairly, well, it's wide open right now, because there's, because there's nothing there, so it would look, I guess, it would stick out right now for, for anyone. So I guess my, my suggestion would be, if you're okay with it, that we table it to allow you to converse with your neighbors on that one.
Okay.
I don't know if, if you're amicable to that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'd be very open to talk. Is that something I reach out to them for, or is that something like a meeting?
I think, I mean, we've got, I think the two, I think both of the comments or had a phone number or contact information on both, both letters that you received, so I think it would, it would make sense for you to.
Sure, yeah, that's no problem.
Or you just knock on the door and say, hi, I'm...
Yeah, we actually thought about doing that, but because they're on a whole different street, I felt weird.
Yeah, no, I, no, I get you, but a lot of times, it's, it's the people in, in back that are always the ones that are most impacted when they look to the back, yeah.
Yeah, I got no problem with that.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have right now.
No, his recommendation is, is perfect.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm on board with that as well, but there's one comment here, an email from Dan and Katie Nagel. I don't know if it says where they live or not. I thought it did. But in any event, they have some questions here, and I'm going to ask you to answer them. Oh, that's great, it's right there. They weren't able to attend the meeting tonight. And it says, "Your application says, states that the building will be used for general self-interests." What does that mean? So what are you going to use it for? You've already sort of mentioned it. But follow-up question is, why does it have to be, why does it have to be so big?
I mean, I, right now, I have three cars, but that, sometimes it's five. I have a trailer, all my yard equipment, I have three kids, it's just a lot of stuff.
How do you go from three cars to five?
It, sometimes, if it's a good year, we have five cars. Sometimes we have three cars.
I'm sorry, I'm just turning this off here. I didn't get that answer, if it's a good year, what?
If I see something I like and...
Oh, oh, okay, all right, yeah.
So you, okay, so we're talking, yeah, we're talking cars that are, are not regular drivers, they are...
Correct.
Okay, kind of like a classic car.
Collector, yeah.
Collectible, yeah, thank you, collectible car. Yeah, so I do want to, I do want to kind of express that the raw size of it, based on the size of the lot, is excessive for that.
Yeah.
And I did have a chance to drive over there, and honestly, there's no other homes in that area that have a building that size.
No.
Well, and if you were to review our prior agendas or watch...
Yeah, I've, I've gone through until 2022.
You'll see, you'll see that this, this is not an uncommon request.
I'm well aware of that, and I understand the neighbors' concerns.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I know I'm the new guy in the neighborhood, and I don't want to cause any problems.
Yeah, no, no.
And I'm willing to do the screening or whatever, you know, whatever needs to be done.
Yeah.
If I could attach it to the house, I have no problem doing that, but it's a little too late for that.
Sure.
I've even positioned the house too far north, or, I mean, yeah, north, to be able to house this.
Right. And I, the reason I brought up prior meetings and applications is because one of the things that we try to do is to be consistent with our decisions. And we have granted, well, frequently, and I'm not going to say a lot, but frequently, requests for larger outbuildings than the code allows, probably just last month. But frankly, ones this side kind of tend to be out more in, toward east Penfield, where the acreage is a lot larger, and there's a lot of homes that have similar structures. So the point that George just made, can you just kind of go on the bird's eye view a little bit?
There, if you goes...
Yeah, I'm interested if, to see if there are any even close to this in that neighborhood.
I mean, my neighbors all down from me do have structures, but it's their, it's their garage, they just have detached garages.
Hmm, yeah.
So it kind of looks like, it'll be identical to that, just on my property line.
Yep. So then the question is, if, if we're treating this as a detached, if we treat this as a detached garage?
We can't.
You can't?
There already is a garage.
Oh, you can't have two garages, that's right.
That would be another variance.
That'd be another variance.
Okay.
But would that be an easier to stomach variance if it were?
Yeah, and I agree, because I think when people saw structure, I think people got a little nervous, thinking a big barn was going to come be placed.
I'm just asking the question.
Although it is still big for that part.
No, it is still big, I agree, but I didn't want people to think that it was going to be just a nice or...
Then there's some more concerns here, but I think you've made it clear, you don't intend to run any business out of here. Do you intend to work on any cars in the area?
I don't have time anymore, no. I used to, yes, but that's not a thing anymore.
Okay, because there's, the same email I was talking about before does talk about noises that can be created, and the author says that he or she grew up on a farm with buildings of similar sizes and knows is familiar with the noise that can be generated from the use of them. So again, you've seen it, take the time to maybe read it again closer, and certainly, if I were you, I would meet with the authors of this. And then we have another one, I think, that came in today, similar concerns from Alisa and Tom Gable, and I think that's why our speaker, who is very anxious to get up here to the, she's going to be speaking on behalf of these folks, but you have a copy of it, so we'll see what, what that goes to. But I think I've heard you say, you're okay with it being tabled, and you're going to make an effort to speak with the neighbors and maybe address their concerns as best you can.
Yeah.
By the way, you'll be back here next month and you may say, I talked with them, they're all still opposed and I did my best. But I'm still asking you for the relief before and we will address it on its merits. I, I, it's just, it, it's a worthwhile effort to try to get for, for the reasons that Andres said. You're going to, it's a beautiful home, you're going to be there for a long time, so do your best to start off on the right foot and, you know, you do what you can. If you can't satisfy everybody, then so be it, we'll come back and we'll address it. So having said that, you're here to speak, obviously, if we can have your name and address.
I'm Jane Tarmino, this is my husband, Bill Tarmino, and we're at 42 Kelly Ridge. And I want to say welcome to the neighborhood and it's uncomfortable meeting under these circumstances.
It's okay.
Because we really are friendly neighbors and that's one thing, like chatting with Dan and everyone feels the same way. Like, everybody's like, these are new neighbors, we don't want to get off on the wrong foot, you know? So I just want you to know that, that, you know, it, it's nothing personal, it's just that, obviously, you chose that neighborhood because it looks like a nice place and a nice place to build your home and raise your family and, and all that. If you, I'm sure you looked at the properties behind you and they're beautiful. I mean, everyone, I'm here representing and supporting and kind of advocating for Dan and Katie Nagel, who are at 59 Kelly Ridge, which is directly behind you. And then Tom and Alisa Gable, who are at 66 Kelly Ridge, which is kind of if you look up the hill to the.
Directly next to Nate.
Nate, yes, on the left of Nate.
With the basketball.
Right, right, and then anyhow, neither of them could attend this meeting tonight. And so we're on, as you go into the cul-de-sac, we're across the street from the cul-de-sac. And so you don't really, and just, we're on that, the angle, we have a, yep, that's us right there. So we, I can only see a little bit of your roof in between houses, we can't really, we would not be impacted by the look of it. But for some reason, sound carries, it just, it's unbelievable how sound carries in our neighborhood. Somehow or another, just the way the land is or whatever. So we would be concerned about noise. Now, if it truly is just storage, you know, or obviously you're going to start a vehicle and drive it away or whatever, that's normal use. But something that Dan Nagel brought up, which is a really good point, is, you know, every, things change in life. And even though you built that house and you're planning on staying there for a long time and raising your family, things happen. And if you have to, or if you choose to sell your property, somebody else can say, hey, wow, I want this because there's this huge structure there and I can run my carpentry business out of there, or I can run my metalworking business out of there. And even though it's zoned residential and it's not supposed to be used for any kind of commercial properties, people have a lot of noisy hobbies, you know? If you get somebody in there who's doing woodworking, I know somebody who had somebody who built canoes in a little garage in the backyard. You know, you've got saws running and banging and all this. And so, or somebody, somebody doing metalworking or car mechanics or, you know, it's a huge building. It would be great to have a party there, you know? You have kids, they're going to grow up, they're going to be teenagers, you're going to go out in the garage, have your parties, you know? Bands, you know, kids love garage bands. And so I guess we're not concerned so much about what you might use it for, but the potential down the road. You know, you have intentions of just using it for storage, but, and if it's a little storage shed, nobody can use it for some of those other things that I just gave examples of. But if there's a huge structure there, you know, when properties for sale, they like to embellish all of the extra features and that would be a great feature, I mean, we all have a lot of stuff and we all could use a whole lot more storage. But, you know, that's, that's the concern. And so the, the noise and some of the things that could go along with it, those are concerns. I mean, all these people have beautiful pools, they've built like paradises in their backyards with decks and patios and all kinds of nice things. And, you know, depending on what this ends up looking like or what the noise, you know, if it doesn't look good in the neighborhood, then it's going to affect everybody's property value. But if it's noisy and depending on the use of it, that can really, really, really affect all of our quality of life. And that's what we're concerned about, you know? So, you know, and, and so along those lines, we had a few more questions, like, is there going to be gas or electric run to it? Is there going to be heat there?
Nope.
There, will there be electric, like for lights, no lights or anything in it?
Um, I honestly haven't thought about it, maybe I'll do some battery powered lights, but no electric, no.
No electric out there?
No.
Okay, I, because you can see where if there's electric to a building or if there's electric and heat, there, that really opens up the potential for a lot more uses. And how tall is it going to be?
It'll be just at 17 or just above 17.
17, okay.
Yeah.
At the peak, right?
At the peak, yep.
And what's the material, is it going to be metal or did you change it?
Yep, it is going to be metal.
So it will be metal and what, is it going to be the black metal?
The sides will be all, it'll match the house, it'll be all white.
Okay, but it will be like a white, like that corrugated metal, that's the way the picture looked?
Correct, and my siding is, that, my siding, if you zoom into the house, I don't know if you can, but my siding actually looks just like that. And I mean, the house isn't even done, all that's, my trim's still got to be painted on the house, I got no, I have nothing on the outside done.
Right.
So for clarification, it'll have the same exterior as the house?
Identical, even the overlap will be the same, the roof pitch is the same. I even found a manufacturer with the same windows with a 24 by 36, which is really hard to find. So, like I said, other than being physically touching the house, it, it'll just look like a part of the house.
And, you know, I guess that, those are all my comments really, oh, are you going to build it yourself?
Yes.
We heard, okay, so when will it be built?
As soon as it gets approved.
But when, but are you going to be doing it Monday through Friday during the day or are you going to be doing it nights?
Mostly, yeah, I mean, last one we did at my friend's house, we did it just weekends.
And so, like, do blue laws, that doesn't affect personal people, right? I mean, like.
I don't know what blue laws are.
The blue laws are like.
Can't do certain things, certain times.
Certain times and certain gates.
Like, like I know Fedex wasn't supposed to have any contractors.
I think town noise ordinances are basically, there's a morning and a evening type, you know, cutoffs.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything specific to building other than noise order, noise ordinances.
Oh, okay.
Probably Fedex had that for his developments, would, would be a criteria for actual, when they're developing something possibly.
This is the kit you order, so essentially, there's not much cutting, you just kind of put it together. It'll probably be a couple of weekends, if that.
So I guess, I think those are all of my questions.
And, and as you've heard us say, we're likely going to get a motion to table, which will pass. And so folks that couldn't make it tonight could certainly come in next time. We typically close the public hearing, but I'll make a part of the motion to be that we leave it open because it is a, what is it, spring break, is that what they call it?
Right.
So it's, there were a number of people that I think if they could have been here, not that you're not doing a fantastic job.
Right.
But that they may want to come in, we'll give them a chance to speak and you a chance to respond again.
I think people were mostly concerned not only about the noise and stuff, but the, the size, you know, because it is. And so they were questioning why the board would approve something, because how many square feet is it and what's the standard?
It's, it's, it's more than double what's allowed.
Right.
So, but, I know that there was somewhere in one of the comments, you know, why would the board consider this? We're obligated to consider it because he's entitled to request the variance.
Right.
Now, that doesn't mean we're obligated to grant it, those are two different things. But he certainly has a right to come in and ask for a variance from the zoning, because that's, that's why we're here.
Right.
Zoning Board of Appeals, because argue, or technically Andy denied it. Because he's got to issue the building permit, he says, I'm not going to issue a building permit because it's too big. You need to go to the zoning board of appeals to get permission before I can do it, that's pretty much how it works. Sure, make me the bad guy.
Well. And nobody wants to be the bad guy, but.
Does he look like a bad guy? Look at him already, he's blushing.
I mean, Dan, Dan Nagel had me go over to his yard and take a bunch of pictures. So I mean, I can sit here and show you guys pictures from, you know, of their yard and from the back of their house looking.
Yeah, you can submit them if you have them.
I mean, I have them on my phone.
Well, somehow send them in, email them or whatever, and then we can take a look at them, we got a whole month now.
For the next meeting, yeah.
But for clarification, I think we're still hoping that you'll have side conversations with all these neighbors prior to the next meeting, so that.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Hopefully that we won't need to have a past thousand.
You can go door to door or you can try to.
I can help them with contact information.
Well, or, you know, have a gathering somewhere and let everybody come.
That's probably what I'll do, yep.
Whatever.
Cookout.
I don't have a grasp, but yeah, we can.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe I can take them to another dinner.
All right, I don't see any electronic comments or any phone ins. So, not to cut anybody off, everybody okay for now, so go ahead, let's make a motion to.
I will move that we table this application until next month, but we'll leave public comment open to a lot of applicants. Time to meet with the neighbors, discuss any kind of landscaping and, you know, size requirements, things like that. And those, those, and work out those details so everyone's in the same know of what's going on.
When is the next meeting?
Third Thursday of the month, whether it's May.
So May something.
I don't know.
All right, so we have a motion to table and a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May 15. I won't be there.
Okay. I think the next two we're, we're going to take together simultaneously, if we can.
If we can.
And we're looking for some.
I don't know why we couldn't.
Oh, thanks.
And this applicant is appearing remotely via Zoom and I believe she's ready. Would you like me to read each one? Or?
I think you have to, right?
Yeah, if you have.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll read them both back to back then.
Yeah.
Or let Shannon read one.
I probably want Shannon to read at least one.
Do that. Kevin Schumacher, American Promotional Events, 4003 Helton, Helton Drive, Florence, Alabama, 35630. Request a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under section 162-6-E1B and section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of sparkling devices at 1990 Brant Point Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by DeMarco Brant Point LLC and his own general business. This is SBL number 093.02-1-25.11. Application number 25Z-0009. The second one. John Perry, care of American Promotional Events, 4003 Helton Drive, Florence, Alabama, 35630. Request a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under section 162-6-E1B and section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of sparkling devices at 1601 Penfield Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Penfield TK Owner LLC and his own general business. SBL number 138.08-1-2.PLZA. This is application 25Z-0010.
Okay, and who do we have on this application?
Hi, Amanda Gump.
Amanda, okay. Doesn't matter to us which one you start with, and if there's something you're going to say that applies to both, feel free to say that as well.
Okay, do you want me to do my name and address?
Wow, yes, thank you for reminding me how to do my job.
I've visited you guys a few times.
Yes.
My name is Amanda Gump, I'm the area manager for American Promotional Events. My address is 35208 State Route 126 in Carthage, New York.
All right, how many times now have we done it at this, at Brant Point?
Brant Point, I've been with the company five years, so this is my fifth time of doing it. And I know that they were utilizing that space prior to my arrival.
And same question for Penfield Road.
Penfield, this will be the third year that we've used it, we did it one year, took a break in the middle there and then we have been there last year and then this would be year three.
Okay, and for each of these, is your operation going to be the same as it was last year?
It is, the only thing that'll be a little bit different is because both of the gentlemen that operate the tents, they are both teachers. And with school getting out on the 27th, they will be open on the weekend, the first weekend. So I believe that would be the 21st and 22nd. And then they will likely be there in the evenings for the rest of the week. And then they'll open again for the entire remainder of the season on that following weekend.
Okay, so, you know, given that your intent is to operate at the same you have in previous years, I think what we'll talk about is imposing the similar conditions from prior approval resolutions. And then I would just ask you to comment on three, three areas, which I think we probably ask you every year, you sort of already touched on it. The dates and the hours of your operation, what security will be provided in terms of overnight? And then any garbage bins or receptacles? Other than that, again, your applications have been consistent over the years and you've always done a really good job running these things, in my opinion anyway. So if you could just comment on those areas for each.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So our season will run June 20th through July 5th. The gentleman will be opening the, probably the evening of the 20th, which would be the Friday. They'd be there all day on the 21st and 22nd. Their hours of operation would fall anywhere from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. As they get into July, it is possible that they would stay open a little bit later than that, if permitted, to 10 o'clock just because, you know, it's during the most busiest time of that season. Storage in the overnight hours, we work with Viola Storage Containers, so they will drop the metal storage box there. And the gentlemen have locks that they are able to secure around there and protect that product during the night. That way no one is able to access it. Garbage, cardboard, anything of that nature is the responsibility of the operators to dispose of. So that usually they'll either keep it in their storage container until they're able to dispose of it or they take it home nightly with them.
Okay, and you may have covered this, but the, at the close of business, how is the product secured and the tent secured?
So the tent is left, they drop the walls down on the side of it. The tables remain inside, but everything else gets locked into the metal storage container. So there's a 20 by 10 Viola storage container that's remaining there on the property that is secured with locks. And so they just transport it from inside the tent into the container every day.
And Shannon, or have we had any issues with this all the years we've granted this? I have certainly have not aware of any.
None that we're aware of.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
No, they've done, well, they've done a good job, so this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, people like this. All right, I don't see any call-ins or any electronic emails. A question was raised earlier stated by a very wise man. The code says these permits shall not be issued for more than a year. Do we have authority to issue one for two years? If it's requested, I don't know, well, let's, you got a year to get an answer, how about that?
We'll look into it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so we don't have any comments, so we'll move right to the consideration. And my motion for both of these application on seeker.
Yeah.
Is going to be that it's type two action for each and no further review required.
I'll second both.
All right, we have two seeker motions, they're the same, declare them type two actions and we have a second on both, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then on the merits of each, if it's okay to take both together, no, let's do Brant Point first.
I think they should be separate.
All right, Brant Point, I'm going to make a motion to approve. I think that their past performance shows that they have been a good license holder, shall we say. They're going to do the same thing they have in years past, haven't been any problems, the public really likes the availability of these fireworks. So I will make a motion to approve with all of the conditions from last year on there. And that's it for Brant Point.
I'll second.
Motion to approve Brant Point in a second, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Penfield Road, I will make an application to approve for the same reasons stated and also include the prior resolution conditions on that.
I'll second.
Motion to approve Penfield Road with a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good luck.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good night.
You as well.
Okay, so I think that's it for the public hearings tonight. So we will, we got, boy, we have, going to have a fairly big agenda next time with three tabled, right? At least three tabled, well, three tabled and three or four more. So in any event, we'll stand adjourned until the next meeting. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Night. Night.